Ready? Okay. All right, well, I'm going to open the meeting. So, good evening, everyone, councillors, staff, members of the public here in attendance, those online joining us, and also the people watching through the live stream. My name's councillor Christine O'Laurs. I'm the mayor of Darabban City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to this council meeting, and I declare the meeting open at 6:05pm. The meeting is being livestreamed. A recording will be made available, and will be up on the council website as soon as it's practicable after the meeting. So, just in starting the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that the Warangri Warrarong people, who are the traditional owners and custodians of the land that we're on here today. I'd want to recognise their continuing connection to culture, to waters and to land. And I want to pay my respects to the elders past and present, and to any First Nations people who might be joining us tonight. I want to welcome and acknowledge our councillors around the table, the staff who are here, and our municipal monitors who are also joining us this evening. We don't have any apologies for this evening. So, I'm going to move on to item four, which is disclosures of conflict of interest. So, if any councillor or relevant staff member has a conflict of interest in relation to any matter that is on the agenda tonight, they need to disclose that conflict of interest and the nature of the conflict of interest. I also remind you that conflicts must also be declared immediately before the item, when it comes up on the agenda as well. So, councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? No? Okay. If during the course of the meeting there is an amendment or a motion put up that then creates a conflict for you, please make sure that you let us know at that point in time. Okay, item five is confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. So, councillors, can I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 28th of January 2025, which has an amendment to item 8.3, tabling of petition Victoria Road, South Crescent, Northcote, to record the second of that motion as councillor Boglas OAM, not councillor O'Laurs OAM. Thank you, I have councillor Jelly, who has moved that motion. Do I have a second? Councillor Selkos, thank you. I'm going to put the vote to the motion. All those in favour? Okay, so that, yep, that's passed unanimously. So, thank you. Okay, item six is council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. So, we read this one out every week. It's always great to see a full gallery of people here. So, we just want to make sure that everyone understands the council's responsibility, which is really to make sure that everyone attending this meeting this evening feels safe, both physically and emotionally. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of one another, and as outlined in our governance rules, to note the following. So, I'm going to read this list out to you, which is from our governance policy. So, silence must be preserved in the gallery at all times during a meeting other than by a person in the gallery who is invited to address the meeting. And that's my job, to make sure silence is preserved, so please do. A councillor or any other person who addresses a meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner, and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Anyone attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectionable words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic, or interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. And finally, if anyone engaged is in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct, and the person must comply with that direction. I'm going to hand over to our CEO, Michael now, who's just going to talk through a few operational matters.
Thanks, thanks so much, Mayor. So, as we do, just in general terms, if there's any need for an emergency to evacuate the building, go down the stairs and out the way that you came in. If that's not an option for you, if the emergency is that way, staff will direct you another way. So, we've got two ways out of the building. So, just take staff direction in case anything happens. Hopefully, there won't be any fires or floods or anything tonight. Health and safety for us here tonight is my responsibility as the CEO, and I take this very seriously, as no doubt many people do, in fact, all people do. There's much business for council to determine tonight. However, we're keen to be as open and transparent as possible, allowing as much time as we need for questions while the community is here, and of course, debate from the councillors. The mayor has spoken about disruptions, so I just want to give you an outline of what can occur. And it's been rarely used in any local government. But in the event that there are disruptions to the meeting, the meeting may be adjourned. So, the mayor has the call on adjourning the meeting, and the gallery may be cleared. It may be that numbers of people from the gallery are cleared from the meeting whilst it continues. The meeting can be adjourned and then closed to the public totally and go into confidential, or it can be closed and cleared and still be livestreamed. So, there are a number of options open to the mayor, depending on the course of action that we need to take. As I said, we want to be as open and transparent as local government can be in answering the questions, but also the debate. But in the event that something does have to occur, the mayor will make a call. I will certainly be looking after the health and safety of the councillors, the staff, and of course, the community that are here tonight. As far as disruptive behaviour, there will be a first warning from the mayor. So, if speaking over or any of the rules that the mayor spoke about under our governance rules before, on the second occasion, then action will be taken. So, that'll be clearing the gallery, et cetera, as I mentioned before. I'll be attempting to answer all questions tonight that have come up through public question time, and I thank the community for putting those in. There are a number who couldn't make it here tonight, but their question will be read and answered by myself. And that those that are here will be invited by the mayor up to the lectern to ask their question, and then I'll be responding to them. There is a bit of repetition in the questions that have been asked tonight, but we have undertaken to answer all of them, even if it is repetitious, so the community see the answer, and again, being as open and transparent as we can. As I said, I'll be removing staff from the meeting in the event that I feel their health and safety is compromised. And then, of course, council will take whatever actions they do. Here's to a good meeting, Mayor, and back to you, thank you.
Thank you. So, before, we're about to go into public questions, and then there's items around submissions. The submissions generally go before the item on the agenda. So, at this point, I just wanted to perhaps suggest, and I've checked in with the people making submissions on item 9.10, to move that item to 9.2. So, I would need a procedural motion. Councillor Demetriadis, anyone prepared? Councillor Aturi, everyone happy to support that? Great, okay, so we'll move. So, that memorandum of understanding with the Darabban Creek Management Committee will go to item 9.2, and everything else move down. Great, okay. So, now it's public question time. So, we have 30 minutes for public question time. If we exceed that time, then I will ask for a procedural motion, councillors, to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions can be taken from people in the gallery unless they were submitted by 12pm today. There is a maximum of three questions each, and speaking time is a total of two minutes. And there is a clock that you can see up, comes up on the computers. For members of the public who have registered to ask a question, either in person or online, I'll call your name when it's time. And I think Michael's also explained, if you're not here, the question still gets read out and answered. And I think we've got some people, virtual questions this evening? We might, anyway, we'll see as we work through. And we usually put all light questions together, but we have, again, given a bit more leeway tonight for people to ask questions that are very similar. So, I'm going to move on. So, the first question is submitted by, or questions, submitted by Angela Denton, who is not attending tonight. So, over to the CEO for those.
Thanks, Mayor, I just give a little minute in case Angela did come, but she's not coming forward. So, thanks, Mayor, thanks, Angela, for your question. Can council provide details of the frequency, time and length of parking compliance patrols for Aldus Avenue, Northcote? Thanks for the question, Angela. Council is aware of parking issues in Aldus Avenue, Northcote. Council's parking enforcement team attended both Thursday and Saturday night last week following events at the Northcote Theatre. Officers patrolled Aldus Avenue as often as possible and will continue to do so. We do have three, I'll just move on with those if they're okay, Mayor, thank you. Does council have a specific policy regarding parking compliance for Aldus Avenue and other nearby streets on the nights where there is a concert at Northcote Theatre? No, council doesn't create enforcement policy for parking on individual streets. And the last question is, do parking compliance patrols typically operate on a Sunday evening? Yes, council's parking enforcement team operates on weekends, including Sunday nights. And thanks, Angela, for those three questions.
Okay, now we have Warwick Blackmuir. Warwick, would you like to come up to the pedestal? Oh, we have a problem with the time clock, but you do have two minutes. So, we'll keep, see if we can get that working, but otherwise, two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Warwick Blackmuir of Thornbury. My question, my first question was, is the council aware of how many domestic rubbish bins are either missing or have damaged lids within the council area?
Thanks, thanks for the first question, Warwick. Yes, we do track broken and missing bin lids, but the information that comes is usually a bit sporadic. So, it does rely on community members advising us of the same and also through our teams. We do encourage people to report it through customer service, or the Snap Send Solve also gets into council. So, please let us know, and we'll try and get them fixed as soon as we can.
Thank you, I'll lift my game. Second question was, has the council considered either imposing levies or raising the rates of businesses within the council area that produce a large amount of litter?
Thanks, thanks again, Warwick. So, in Darabban, litter enforcement officers respond to community litter complaints. Where litter can be identified to a specific business or individual, fines may be issued in accordance with our local regulations. Council doesn't currently impose additional levies or rates on businesses, though, for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warwick. We've now got Mohammed Helmy. Mohammed, if you'd like to come up, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got one question. It's with reference to item 9.1, contract award, CT202445, provision of IT hardware. The question is, what investigation, if any, did the probity officer undertake to satisfy themselves that the self-declaration made as part of the offers was founded on fact? Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Thanks so much for your question, Mohammed. The independent probity adviser is tasked to oversee and attend all meetings and ensure the evaluation process has been undertaken in an accountable and transparent manner, in line with council-endorsed policy and process. The principles of the adviser are to ensure fairness, consistency of process and resolution of conflict of interest. So, it is to make sure everything is above board is their role.
Right, okay, but the probity officer has not reviewed this? Does that specifically answer my question?
So, the probity officer doesn't review any of the information? They make sure process is against policy and fairness, and everything is above board, if you like? They don't interrogate any detail at probity level? Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Ben Horth, please correct me if I say your name, if I've said your name incorrectly.
It's not mine, I think he said it right, though. But he's downstairs parking, so perhaps we could, I mean, oh, but maybe you could go next.
Yeah, look, I'm happy to jump and we'll come back, okay? Lachlan Chellis? That one's you?
Thank you. So, my question, like Mohammed's, is regarding item 9.1 in the agenda. So, according to the report, the competitive tender contracts for provision of IT hardware, supply and delivery of laptop devices. How soon after council makes its decision will the community know what brand of laptops council has purchased? And can we get an assurance that, in line with community sentiment and council commitments, that these won't be HP computers?
Thanks so much for the question, Lachlan. So, number one, we understand this is an important matter for the community, and council will discuss this as the first item of business on the agenda tonight. So, we know it's 9.1, so it's coming up next. In accordance with council's procurement policy, confidential contract information may be released following a resolution of council. This is standard practice when awarding contracts. Another example is on the agenda tonight on 9.11, is going through exactly the same process. So, we would expect through the final resolution and everything that all will become clear after council has debated 9.1.
So, you're saying tonight it'll be clear, is that what you meant?
Yes, 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 yep, straight after the, straight after or during the item.
Thank you.
And your second question?
Yeah, so, on the same item in the council agenda, could I get some clarification or an explanation as to what, this is a quote from the report, "a direct affiliation or association with an international military force, government or non-government, manufacturer of weapons used in war, and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuses", end quote, means or looks like? For example, does this cover other associations along the supply chain? And if not, why not? And lastly, on this one, why is it that it's likely that HP products are being considered when it's common knowledge that HP's products and services are used as the backbone of Israel's illegal apartheid system in Palestine?
Thanks again for the next question, Lachlan. So, the council report of the 14th of August 2024 provided a clear self-declaration for officers to assess against. And just for members who may not be aware, Darabban City Council actively seeks assurance from all suppliers by way of self-declaration on the extent to which the supplier does not have a direct affiliation or association with international military forces, government or non-government, manufacturer of weapons used in war, and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuse. The procurement assessment required council to assess tenders by requesting tenders submit a self-declaration of their business activities and declare if they have a direct affiliation or association. The endorsed process clarified no further checks would be undertaken. So, they were undertaken and used as part of the assessment process.
How direct is direct, I guess, is the question there?
So, as per the council resolution, direct or indirect? So, they had to do a self-assessment, and we assessed it against their self-assessment.
Forgive me if I'm misreading or I've missed a word, but my understanding was that it says a direct affiliation or association. Are you saying that it was direct or indirect in the wording in August 2024?
Direct affiliation or association with an international military force.
Yeah, so, yeah, what does direct mean, I suppose, this?
Answered the question in that it was applied as per the wording in the motion. So, it was a self-declaration, so I think that in itself is limiting.
Yeah, I understand that it's a self-declaration, but when it says a direct, is it how those companies interpret the word direct?
I wouldn't have thought it's open for interpretation. When we looked at the assessment, and I wasn't part of it, but we did as a group, declaring if they have a direct affiliation or association. So, that would be a direct business affiliation or any association with the aforementioned groups.
So, any association?
Yeah, I'm going to have to hold you now because you're over time and you've also done three questions.
It was the second question, I think it makes sense now. Any association is no good, got it?
Thank you. Is Ben here now? Would you like to come up? You've got two minutes, you can ask three questions.
Thank you, and apologies that I'm late. So, my first question, my understanding is it's two minutes per question?
In total?
Total.
That, okay, well, that's not my reading of what's on the website.
It says the speaking time is a total of two minutes, but go ahead, or you'll be using your minute.
For questions, or, okay, well, I don't regard my time as having started. My first question is, noting that according to the agenda for tonight's meeting, the debate on item 9.1, contract award, provision of IT hardware is not to be held in camera, and council's tendering processes must be conducted publicly according to the Local Government Act and other legislation and precedent. Nonetheless, at item 9.1 in the agenda, the supplier being recommended for tender award in the officer's recommendation motion, clause one, is not named. The recommended supplier will be named by council officers during the reading of the item immediately prior to the debate, which the community can witness, but leaving no time for concerned community members to research and speak to their elected councillors about the recommended supplier and any ethical or other issues that may exist, or to ask public questions, like I am doing now.
Can I please get you to stick to the questions as you submitted?
Yeah, well, this is the preamble to the question. I submitted because there is a severe character limit on the website, so I couldn't put the entire question in there. Can council please inform the community why the recommended supplier's name has been suppressed until a point in the meeting where the community can no longer meaningfully engage with that recommendation, including pointing to governance rules or other relevant instruments which mandate or allow for this, and comment on how council can claim to maintain sufficient standards of public probity and oversight by the electorate, foundational to any democratic governance structure when community members are effectively shut out of any debate or review of the decision to award the contract to a particular recommended supplier?
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, and thanks, Ben, for your question. So, it's not exactly as you've put forward, but that's fine. Again, as I answered to Lachlan before, we understand this is an important matter for the community, and council will discuss this as the first item of business on tonight's agenda as per 9.1. In accordance with council's procurement policy, confidential contract information may be released following a resolution of council, which no doubt will occur during the debate and council ultimate resolution tonight. This is standard practice when awarding contracts. Another example of these is included on the agenda tonight. 9.11 is being treated exactly the same way. Council will determine who they allocate the contract to, as they will in 9.11, and that's why it's blank on here, council will determine that tonight. So, it's not predetermined, council will determine it tonight.
I understand it's not predetermined, and that's not implied in my question. My question was, how can it be that, I mean, the debate's not in camera, so the matter is not regarded as confidential, and yet we will all hear the name of the company only when the recommendation motion is read out? And that effectively means that the community cannot engage with this decision in advance of it being debated by council?
You have already asked that very same question.
I have, and I've not received, frankly, an answer that is to the point.
Just looking to Michael to see if he feels there's any more information that can be provided?
No, I don't believe so, Mayor. That's the process that we run here at Darabban.
I understand that's the process you run, sir. The question asked to point to relevant governance rules or other legislation that mandates or allows for such shutting down of a democratic review process by the community that elects these councillors?
We're not shutting down democracy at all. It is in the open part of council. Council will openly debate and determine this decision, and it'll be public as soon as council makes a decision.
Well, it will be public immediately prior to the debate. Anyway, that's a non-answer to my question, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
My second question is this. I understand that item 9.1 in the council agenda for this meeting refers to council awarding a contract to replace aging laptops. I also understand that council is currently using a certain brand of laptops, which, according to the Boycott, Divestment and Sanctions Movement, BDS, has an association, a direct association, with an international military force government or non-government, with manufacturer of weapons used in war? This is the preamble to my question, and it's directly relevant.
Sorry, it's you stepping over the line in terms of, you need to get your questions approved.
Okay, I've got my question approved, and I'm coming to it. This is the preamble to the question, which didn't fit in the box, as I've explained to you and as I explained to the governance people on the phone. And, right, et cetera. Can the community know what brand of laptops will be purchased by council if councillors award the tender to the company proposed by council officers at item 9.1, which, as I've mentioned, is still not known to the community due to the confidential nature of the report on this item?
I think this has already been answered, but I'll go to Michael.
Yep, thanks, Ben, and through you, Mayor. So, again, in accordance with council's procurement policy, confidential contract information may be released following the resolution of council, which is being considered at 9.1 tonight.
So, the answer is no, the community cannot know in advance?
You'll know at 9.1, in the conversation.
But not in time for us to ask questions about it, which is my point.
Okay, you've got one last question, no preamble, thank you, just straight to the question.
Given that all this council's recently elected councillors signed the We Vote for Palestine election pledge to support Palestine in council governance during their upcoming terms, and in particular to ensure that council adopts an active and consistent position on human rights in Palestine and elsewhere, including in its own procurement policy in the awarding of contracts, my question is, will council uphold the principles of this unanimous pledge when it comes to making a decision on the new IT contract tonight? And I would note that there is nothing in the government's rules that disallows me from posing a question to councillors. It is not mandated that only council officers respond to questions. If you, Mayor, decline to respond or to allow other councillors to respond, that is your decision, but it is a decision. It's not decided in advance. And this question is addressed to councillors.
Thank you for the answer to this question.
Thanks again, Ben, for your final question, and thanks through you, Mayor. We understand this is an important issue to the community tonight. Thus, it is listed number one on the agenda tonight. We've allowed questions and repetitive questions. We will continue to go through those and answer those. It will be debated, and there will be an answer after 9.1.
Thank you.
And a response from councillors? No, that's been declined?
I'm happy to respond to it.
Yeah, thank you, I would appreciate it.
We actually followed the wording on the declaration talks about having a policy in place to try and, you know, make sure that you're not supporting companies that are breaking human rights, particularly in relation to Israel. The policy was in place, it was used for this particular tender process. You will hear in the debate, and you can decide for yourself whether it worked or didn't work, but it definitely was in place, and I think we have followed that.
And the declaration you're referring to is the pledge which you and all of the councillors here tonight did sign in advance of the election? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. We have, now, I think we had Simon, right? Simone Howard, sorry. So, Simone, just to reiterate, you can ask three questions, it is two minutes, there is no preamble.
I think I did have two questions, but you've pretty much answered the first one. So, the council resolved at its meeting on the 14th of August 24 that the evaluation criteria for this tender was to include a self-declaration from tenders to seek assurance from all suppliers by way of self-declaration on the extent to which the supplier does not have direct affiliation, association with international military forces, manufacturer of weapons used in war, or and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuses. Has council followed up on the veracity of the self-declarations? If not, why not? If so, what further questions were asked, or what investigations were carried out?
Over to you, Michael?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Simone, for your question, and through you, Mayor. As my previous response to Lachlan's question, the procurement assessment required council to assess tenders by requesting tenders to submit a self-declaration of their business activities and declare if they have a direct affiliation or association. The endorsed process clarified no further checks would be undertaken.
Thank you, thank you, Simone. Jess Gordon? Thank you, Jess. Just a reminder, you've got two minutes.
Yeah, cheers. Look, again, my first question has more or less been answered, but I may as well pose it for the room just in case. I've got two minutes. So, as per page seven in the report, what reference checks were conducted for the recommended supplier in ensuring the supply and delivery of laptop brands, specifically in relation to any connection to an international military force, government or non-government, manufacturer of weapons used in war, and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuses? Maybe just, you know, on the off chance, we can get something better than a self-declaration answer?
And did you want to ask your other question as well?
So, you just, previous answer, copy paste?
All right, you've got two questions.
It is the same answer, yes.
Yeah, okay, cool, just checking.
I'm happy to repeat it if you'd like.
I heard you loud and clear. My second question, and again, perhaps maybe some of the councillors might want to answer to this one, because, you know, you have to sleep with yourself at night. But what are the ethical implications and reputational governance risks if it is found at a later stage that council purchased laptops from a company that is implicated, including as a subsidiary or affiliate with an international military force, government or non-government, manufacturer of weapons used in war? or non-government, manufacturer of weapons used in war and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuses?
Thanks again, Jess. So first of all...
So can, do any of the councillors or the mayor also want to speak to this one, not just the CEO?
No, no.
They don't?
No.
Okay.
It's just me, unfortunately.
Just you?
Just me. So...
You weren't elected, though. I mean, the mayor is my councillor, and unfortunately, I couldn't vote for her because she, you know, is a member of a genocide-supporting party, so...
I'll answer the question, Mayor. This is a hypothetical question, Jess, but we understand this is an important matter for the community, thus it's listed as the first item of business on tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, okay.
We're going to go to Jaclyn Langrick? Thank you, Jaclyn.
Just talking. A competitive public tender process was undertaken to identify a suitable supplier capable of delivering high-quality laptops and services to meet businesses', business requirements. In general terms, and without revealing any confidential information which is happening, did any of the suppliers fail to meet council's social procurement requirements?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Jaclyn, and through you, Mayor. All the submitted tenders, tenders, four were assessed as meeting the council's criteria, which progressed to formal assessment.
Was there any that failed?
Four met the criteria.
Okay, we've got Tallulah Jane next. She's not here, so perhaps, Michael, if you could read the questions as well?
I can. Thank you, Mayor, and through you. Can the council acknowledge that the role of local government is to serve everyone in the community and that by flying the Palestinian flag at Preston Town, Preston Town Hall, it is alienating residents by valuing one side over the other? I'll read all three questions, because, sorry, two questions, because they're related. When will the flag policy for Darabin finalise, which has been currently in review for over a year? So the Office of the CEO was coordinating the review of the flag policy, so I do take this quite seriously, which council will have the opportunity to consider and finalise in the very near future. The third question was, does council have a current graffiti management strategy in place to tackle the significant rise in tagging vandalism and graffiti, including antisemitic graffiti, to public and private property in Darabin? The answer is, council has a strong commitment to enhancing and developing the visual appearance of its municipality to ensure it's a place where people feel safe, connected and proud. In Darabin, graffiti management is governed by council's graffiti management strategy. Residents can report graffiti on council assets for action, while private property owners are encouraged to seek support or resources for the removal of graffiti from their property. We will work with the appropriate authorities on graffiti removal, removal on assets across Darabin.
Okay, can I please just ask for a procedural motion to extend public question time for another 30 minutes if we need it? I've got councillor Bogliss and councillor O'Brien, thank you, and sorry, councillor Gatana, I did see you, but I've got these two first. All right, so now we have, where are we up to? Lily Levine, who is also not attending, so you get to do some more reading there, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. Given the recent display of the Palestinian flag during the handover of deceased hostages by Hamas terrorists, why does the council believe it is appropriate to continue flying the Palestinian flag at Preston Town Hall? As per my previous answer, the Office of the CEO was coordinating the review of the flag policy, which council will have the opportunity to consider and finalise in the very near future. There are three questions from Lily, Madam Mayor, I'll continue on those. Number two, what actions will council take to ensure murals that are painted in our community promote unity and inclusiveness? This is in specific reference to a large mural at 126A Gladstone Street, which displays globalise the Intevada, which can be viewed from St George's Road. Given that this slogan can be interpreted as promoting aggressive resistance against community members with links to Israel, potentially inciting divisiveness and hostility within the community, I am concerned that previous requests to address this issue by a snap sense solve have been ignored and subsequently deleted. The answer is, murals aren't considered signage for the purposes of the planning scheme and therefore not regulated under the Planning Environment Act 1987. A check of our council's request management system indicates council received a single complaint about the mural on the 8th of October 2024, which was responded to immediately. And the third question, Mayor, can the council provide information on the measures being taken to address the increase in antisemitic messages, graffiti and stickers across the entire municipality of Darabin? I refer to my previous answer on the graffiti, but also graffiti on council assets will be removed and kits are available to help people remove graffiti on private property. Council also alerts the state government when offensive and harmful graffiti is found on state government-owned infrastructure, and like recent examples, council has actually responded to make sure it's removed as soon as practicable. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, David Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Laris. I have three questions I'd like to ask consecutively. One, what evidence, for example, in act or association rules, was relied upon to form the view, as recorded in the agenda papers and minutes of the December council meeting, that Darabin Creek Management Committee and Mary Creek Management Committee require, quote, committee members to act in the association's interests when attending management committee meetings, unquote, and that the role, quote, is not a representative one? Two, does this advice to councillors mean, as is certainly implied, that Darabin councillors and officers attending management committee meetings must shed their responsibilities to Darabin and instead act exclusively in the interests of the association? Three, while such a position is self-evidently contradictory and impossible, to what extent was such advice, along with repeated assertions more recently about the independence of incorporated associations, part of attempting to diminish their standing to prepare the ground for attempts at outsourcing?
Thank you, David. Over to you, Michael.
Thanks, David, for your questions, and through you, Mayor. In response to question one, council sought legal advice to understand this, and the lawyers considered the Local Government Act, the Associations Incorporation Act, and the Rules of Association of the Darabin Creek Management Committee. In answer to question two, regarding council, councilors attending management committee meetings, broadly, yes, they need to put the interests of the committee firsthand, but we understand that many management committee members of an incorporated association must prioritise the interests of the association when they are exercising their role as a management committee member. However, generally, it's also fine for councillors to be on management committees and to draw on their experience with council. And question number three, we value the many incorporated associations of work with council and support community across Darabin, and are looking forward to enduring community partnerships into the future. That's why it's important that we have a clear understanding of the legal requirements and options, so that when we work with partner organisations, we are all on firm ground. I can clarify that service provision for Darabin Parklands is currently subcontracted to DCMC, and that if a decision is not made about what to do after the end of the current arrangement, it would sunset.
Okay, Peter Thompson? Thanks, Peter.
Sorry, I've just got back from Queensland, I'm a little bit sorry. So, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councillors, CEO, staff, thank you for acknowledging my questions, one of which has been answered already by one of your members, a staff member, indeed, about a garden, a communal garden, a reservoir. So he explained it to me. The question was asked of me, so I went and found out. That's all it was about, all right? The other two items, though, hang on. Community garden, oh, yeah. Yes, buses running on the 552 route heading north, so that's Dyson's buses, tracking along Whitelaw Street, Black Street and Black Street, yeah. They were turned off a number of years ago due to essential works regards drainage at the end of my street, Black Street. The resultant was, as I'm led to believe, as Dyson stated, that they could not traverse the works that were put in, which is like a little gully to allow water to divert, because their buses would bottom out and they crack wind screens. So anyway, they rerouted around another way. But the unfortunate part there is, is with increased densification of population, the streets have become more laden with traffic either side, the buses just squeezed through, and of course, there's all sorts of drama. But to top it all off, the school that shut in the street, my street, Black Street, which was St Stevens, is now reopened as St Monicas, and the buses are now traversing the same path again that the passenger buses used to.
Peter, you better pop onto your other question.
No.
Just in interest of time. It's a red kite.
That's enough tonight, you've got it written down, you know, you can digest it in your own time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your questions, Peter, and we will give you a response to all three. We can give it to you in writing, so you've got it again. But bus route 552 continues to connect with the north-east of Reservoir with Northcote Plaza via High Street. Bus routes in Victoria are set by the Department of Transport and Planning, which you well know, and we continue to advocate for additional and extra services right across the municipality. We talk to them very regularly.
Thank you. And Adam Mills?
Evening all. I'd just like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land and pay my respects to elders past and present as well. I've got three questions, all about Northcote Place development, so I'll ask them all in one go and then, and then get a reply. So the Owners Corporation of the recent development, 198 Beavers Road, 74 Townhouse Development Scheme, sent a letter to council officers and councillors on the 26th of August 2024, requesting a response to a number of issues associated with the development, including non-compliance of the approved plans, and requesting a comprehensive update on the status of all three, 33 planning conditions, which we've not yet had a formal adequate response to. Will council be responding? And I'll ask my next two, because they're all sort of associated. Question two, why and how did council's engineering department authorise the removal of the rain gardens without agreement from the planning department, which was in breach of the approved permit and is going to result in increased costs and maintenance for the committee? And the final question is, given the serious breaches of planning conditions and that the committee is currently about to commission a report on the implementation of the common property, including all the civil infrastructure, at a significant cost to all residents, will senior council officers meet with members of the committee within the next 14 days to discuss the issues of non-compliance by Metro and Croatian Homes and the Way Forward before the conditions are discharged? Thank you.
Over to you.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor, through you, and thanks for your questions, Adam. So we're certainly aware of the longstanding issues surrounding the compliance with the planning permit at 198 Beavers Road, Northcote. We've been working closely with the developer and the builder to seek remedy to all of those compliance issues. We will be responding, so, so yes, is the short answer. In regard to the removal of the rain gardens, we'll have to have a look at that a bit further. We're not aware of it, so we haven't issued anything as far as we're aware. So we will identify what's gone on there, any stormwater management elements of the approved planning permit, and then we'll discuss it in an upcoming meeting with the Owners Corporation. So there's one within the next 14 days, I understand. So we'll do that. And the final one regarding the serious breaches, we'll arrange a meeting with the senior officers and the OC to discuss any non-compliances with the planning permit within the next 14 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to submissions. So our governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting on items that are on the agenda. And so we have three of those this evening. One I will call up now because it relates to our first item, which is the provision of IT hardware. So that's Ben, again, Ben, yours. Sorry if I'm saying your name incorrectly.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, so you've got two minutes, Ben.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So yes, this is my submission on item 9.1. Mayor Laris, Darabin councillors and Darabin council, in August 2024, Darabin council passed a resolution ensuring all new suppliers of council did not hold, quote, direct affiliation or association with international military forces, manufacturer of weapons used in war, and organisations that benefit from illegal occupation and human rights abuses, end quote. This was a principled decision made in light of Israel's genocide in Gaza, and it practically sought to not enter into contracts with companies and suppliers that supported the illegal occupation of Palestine. Darabin council was bravely at the forefront of Australian councils, seeking to take a stand against the injustices in Palestine. On Monday 24 February 2025, that is, tonight, Darabin council will discuss and decide on the awarding of an IT contract for the supply of new laptops to replace its current stock of HP laptops. HP plays a hugely significant role in Israel's oppression of Palestinians. HP are complicit in the occupation, settler colonialism and apartheid suffered by Palestinians through their provision of computer hardware to the Israeli police and Israel's Population and Immigration Authority, essentially forming the backbone of Israel's segregation and apartheid. In light of Darabin's strong stance against human rights injustice and its steadfast procurement policy, we trust that Darabin council will use this as an opportunity to cease the use of HP laptops and to source laptops from suppliers that are not in any way connected to Israel's ongoing occupation and apartheid. We look forward to celebrating Darabin's continued commitment to human and Palestinian rights within its procurement and supply chain. And in the 15 seconds that I have left, I will just note that the text I've just read is the text of a petition, of which there are close to 500 signatures currently, but which this council has disallowed. Council officers are recommending that it be disallowed from being tabled at this meeting tonight on the grounds that it is either derogatory or defamatory. And everything that I have just said is not only in a discourse which is respectful to councillors and council officers, but is also fact widely reported, including by conservative media. There is nothing defamatory or untrue or derogatory in this petition, and it should be tabled in this council.
Thank you, Ben. Just to explain the difference between you presenting something in your words, us endorsing something, or council endorsing something to get published, there's just some legal difficulties with it, but you can be assured that all of the councillors received that petition, we all read it, so...
Yes, and I further understand that it is within your discretion, Mayor, when the item comes up, to decide whether or not it will be tabled. And let me say that as part of my submission on item 9.1, that it will be frankly outrageous if this petition is not tabled at this meeting. The community has expressed its will, and that should be recorded duly in this council's records.
Thank you for your opinion, I think everyone has heard there's been a petition, and so they've heard your words.
You've now heard it, but only because I had to sneak it in because of this weaponisation of governance rules against democracy, which is completely unacceptable.
It's actually just a legal and governance issue, so thank you, Ben. I'll ask you to take a seat now. Thank you. All right. So get into the business of the meeting. Yep. So I was just going to talk to your petition, but I don't need to do that now. All right. Yes, first up is office, we're on to the item 9.1. Do I have anyone who would like to move a motion? Councillor Arturri? Oh, sorry, yep, questions, you may ask a question. Can you use your microphone, please, councillor Greco?
Mayor, just in relation to this item, I just have the question regarding, for what's come from the gallery, is that when we, and I intend to move this motion, given I've been working very hard with officers to try and find the right wording for the motion, so I'm hoping that as Mayor, you will allow me to meddle. But my question is, Mayor, is that when the motion is moved, can one mention the laptop company that will be supplying us with laptops? That is, the brand of laptops that will be using? Currently, we're using HP laptops, and whether the new contract will be able to mention the brand?
My understanding is yes. I think you were given this advice, as long as it's not in a defamatory way, but I will hand it to Michael.
Thanks for the question, councillor Greco, and through you, Mayor. So that's, that's correct, councillor. It may come up in the, the motion, or the debate, or the discussions through the course of it. You will indicate the company that's been awarded the contract, which isn't the, the manufacturer of the laptops. You'll also talk about the dollar value of the contract, and you may talk about the brand of the laptop. The question will arise, as the mayor mentioned... The question will arise, as the mayor mentioned, the same as Mr Hawth, is if it goes into territory that you start talking about them that breaches legal or governance rules, then the mayor will have to adjourn the meeting and go into confidential from that. But naming them is no issue.
Mayor, I'm happy to move the motion. I'll take a second now.
Sorry, councillor Gaetano, does anyone have any further questions? No, and I had already asked, and Matt Arturri had put his hand up first. So councillor Arturri, you will get an opportunity to have your say, councillor Greco, so. The motion, yeah. Oh, sorry, do we have a second? I've got myself quite, yes, so thank you, councillor O'Brien.
I should have made clear that I'm moving an alternate motion that's been circulated to councillors at four, can't find the time, 4:42pm today.
Can you just confirm if that's the correct motion?
Once it's filled in.
Sorry, is that motion going up? Can we? Sorry, we have one with the information filled out, but will be coming soon.
Mayor, my motion is ready to go, if you like.
It's actually a pre-prepared motion that was done by officers that is coming forward. We had a variety of options on it, so. Just one that's filled out is what we need. Okay, so does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This is a very important decision that council needs to make tonight, and as we can all see, it's a very multifaceted item and decision that comes with it, has generated passionate interest in our community. I'd like to thank everyone who've made submissions and asked questions on the matter, on the item here tonight. The crux of the issue that we're deciding tonight is that the current laptops we're using are over five years old. And I don't have to explain to councillors and council officers that the hardware we are currently using is well beyond its use-by date. They're out of support updates and perform sluggishly and are prone to many issues. And on its face, the aging laptops present difficulties to the operation of the organisation. Staff efficiency has been reduced, and the IT department here at council is constantly caught up with dealing with malfunctioning hardware. The aging laptop fleet also presents significant cyber and financial risk. Continuing to delay the replacement of the current laptops would mean that Darabhan becomes more and more susceptible to cyber attacks, which can impose a massive cost on the organisation when it comes to insurance, not to mention the significant financial cost in the event of an attack itself. Such an attack would have a massive negative impact on the organisation and the residents that it in turn serves. For these reasons, to delay or make no decision tonight would be extremely irresponsible. As councillors will know, this decision has not been an easy one for any of us. Weighing up the financial security and the ethical implications of the options presented to us, I believe that the option that stands part of the motion on the screen strikes a balance, although I acknowledge that it isn't a perfect solution. I also want to take this opportunity to mention the social and sustainable procurement policy adopted by the previous council and used throughout this tender process. And as we can see on, I think it's the last clause, could be of the motion. Yes. Following the tender process on this item, it is clear that the policy needs to be reviewed, indeed it will be in 2025, to ensure that the outcome of its implementation is consistent with its intention. And I'd ask councillors to consider the motion very carefully and support it and ensure that the matter's resolved this evening.
Councillor Arturri, for the benefit of the gallery, do you want to say which laptops it is?
The brand of laptop is Dell.
Thank you. Would the second elect to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so a number of the issues have already been covered by the mover, so I won't repeat them all. But I do think some were in further reflection, so we're clear on what we're considering and voting on here. IT equipment is integral to doing the work of council, and we know that the current failing technology needs to be replaced. IT equipment also presents significant ethical challenges, given the variety of materials and labour involved at different points in the supply chain and in how equipment is used. We know council is procuring for good intentions, but we also know that IT equipment can be used in ways that impact privacy, safety and human rights. And we know that many in our community rightly take these issues seriously. With all options before us presenting challenges in one way or another, my heart and mind have been divided, and so to get clarity, I've used my professional experience of the UN Sustainable Development Goals. The goals are complex, but their basic intent can be interpreted simply, and taking this approach really helped me. The STGs address important issues such as safe work, modern slavery, social justice, human rights, peaceful societies and accountability. This helped me boil it down further to reflect on my own morals and some of the things that I fundamentally believe in. I believe that as individuals and organisations, we contribute to shaping the world we live in through the decisions that we make. And I believe that the products and services that we're presented by multinationals in a capitalist world means we spend our money on lots of things that drive detrimental outcomes for humans and the planet. And I think it shouldn't have to be this way. None of this changes the fact that we have a difficult decision before us right now. But looking forward, it's clearly that we need to strengthen our sustainable procurement policy and the things that go with it. If we do this, we can ensure that our valuable money is used for good in our interconnected local and global communities. We can start this work now by accepting that our roles are not just about deciding how much money we spend, but also the things that this money either entrenches or improves. So although it's still not perfect an outcome, I think that this option puts us in a better path to becoming the compassionate progressive organisation and community that we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do any councillors wish to speak in opposition of the motion? I'm sure that wasn't when you meant to put your hand up, councillor Greco. What was? You want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition? No, okay. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor, and I commend my colleagues for putting this motion and for seconding this motion. What this motion does, to be clear, is that it awards the contract to uplinks who will be supplying us Dell laptops to this council, which means that this council will no longer be using HP laptops, but this contract will enable us to move into using Dell laptops. I think it's a very wise decision that the council has made and a truly ethical decision. And I want to thank the over 180 emails that were received over the last few days, the letters, also the over 400 people that have signed the petition, which unfortunately was not allowed to be tabled here, all pointed to the direction about this council with a history of being a progressive council. And I'm old enough to remember that this council played a strong role in relation to the boycotts in regards to South Africa. So it's continuing on with that tradition in relation to boycott sanctions and disinvestment. So we will be replacing our HP laptops. Unfortunately, I'm not able to go into the reasons, the ethical reasons associated with some of the companies that lodged their tenders. And so I'll leave that aside. I think the gallery has spoken loudly in regards to that. I think that this council, if we make this decision unanimously, I think it will be one of the most important decisions in this four-year term that this council will make in terms of ethically standing by an important issue in regards to having ethical supply chain that comes with awarding tender contracts. So I hope that this can be an unanimous decision, and I'll finish on this point. And also I hope that councillors make a conscientious decision in regards to this because of the gravity and the importance of what we see before our eyes taking place, which is a genocide.
Thank you. So others speaking, councillor Sangster?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in support of the motion. Firstly, I'd also like to thank the officers for their work. We know that council attempts to balance a strong commitment to justice while also ensuring that we make sound financial decisions. And we also know that our current procurement policy is unfortunately not adequate and does not include sufficient checks and balances to rule out purchases of products from companies who do not meet our commitment to social justice. As a council, we clearly have some major work to do to strengthen this policy. We also recognise that there is no authoritative source of information on the IT sector to prove that any suppliers or producers have or do not have links to military or humanitarian injustice. We know that this is a world where everything is connected, nothing is untainted. But we also know that there is a scale of complicity and that the other options given to us were for a product highly implicated on this scale. We know that this is true, even though it cannot be authoritatively proved according to our current assessment of truth. Holocaust historian Timothy Schneider says, "To abandon facts is to abandon freedom. If nothing is true, then no one can criticise power because there is no basis upon which to do so. The only rule is money and might." So we do have facts to work with in making this decision, and those facts do tell us a different story from the authoritative one, which is why I am voting in support of councillor Arturri's motion.
Councillor Jelly?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the mover and secondor of the motion and everybody who's spoken and for all the work, again, with the council staff who have guided us through a very complex decision-making process. We have an urgent need to make this decision now because the laptops that council is currently operating on are supported by an operating system that will no longer be supported by the software provider in only eight months' time. That opens up some of the cybersecurity risks that councillor Arturri mentioned earlier. And this exposes not just residents and ratepayers, but also staff in organisations. And anybody who's worked in an organisation that has been subject to a cybersecurity tackle understands that the real and present threat that that poses and the expense that puts on individuals as well as councils. This decision, or the decision that the previous council made in August last year, gives us guidance on how to navigate the difficult terrain that councillor O'Brien mentioned before around IT procurement, while also balancing our strong commitment to social justice with our obligation to act in the best interests of our community. Council's procurement and tender processes have upheld a high degree of fidelity to the principles of transparency and also the legislative requirements. So in balancing all of these elements, I believe that this option is the most appropriate choice, and I therefore will be voting in support of this motion. So thank you very much. I commit it all to you, councillors.
Thank you. Given that we have no one putting their hand up to vote to speak in opposition, shall we move to the vote, or, yeah, everyone's happy to do that? Okay, let's do that. So all those in favour of the motion on the board at the moment, please raise your hand. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And thank you to the members of the public who have been so passionate about this issue. We're just going to have a five-minute break, so we're going to adjourn the meeting for five minutes. People who have come for this item, you are welcome to stay, but you can also use this opportunity to leave if you want to, so up to you. Thank you. Back at 7:15. Okay, we're back from the back break. Oh, has it worked? For those of you at home watching the live stream, we seem to have lost the visual, but you can hopefully hear us, and we'll fix that as soon as we can. We have moved items around, so we are now looking at the memorandum of understanding. So we are now looking at the memorandum of understanding with Darabin Creek Management Committee. So, does anyone have any questions? Sorry, we have two submissions, which is why I moved this forward. So, let me just do that. So you have two minutes to make your submission. And I'll get Annette Selkeed to come up to the mic and, yeah. Go ahead, Annette, you've got two minutes.
Okay, thank you, mayor and councillors, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Annette Solkeld. I'm the executive officer at the Darabin Creek Management Committee, or DCMC. So in general, DCMC supports a review of our current arrangements with Darabin councillors. We see there is room for improvement on both sides. That's no argument there. However, we have several notable issues with the current process that was put up for consideration by council. The first is the process itself, or what we see as a lack of process described. So while tonight's report outlines a timeline for reporting back to council, there is no process of how options will be determined, how they might be assessed or ranked, or on what basis options will be recommended to council. This doesn't align with council's own public transparency principles, in our opinion, nor does it allow DCMC or the community to assess if a fair process is being undertaken. The second point is that there's no avenue for community consultation in the proposed process. And as you know, many members of the Darabin community are highly vested in the Darabin catchment and the lands along it and have been instrumental in its care for decades. We believe locking this same community out of this process is poor governance and community outcome. And thirdly, we do not think the May reporting timeline is adequate. The original council resolution in October 2023 on this matter asked for a report on future options by December 2024, giving a 14-month period for council officers to do this work. Obviously, that timeline has been and gone. The proposal now is to squeeze most of this work into effectively a two-month period. We believe if the council generally wants to canvass options, assess these options, attain legal advice, provide officers the time to prepare briefings and reports on top of the business's usual work and potentially including consultation with the Darabin community, we suggest a longer period is needed. We don't want this to be a mere tick-and-flick exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette, and thank you very much for the great work that you do. I'm gonna also now get Graham Hamilton to come up to the lectern to make your submission. So thank you, Graham, you've got two minutes. And, and the video is going now, sorry.
It's a shame I had a good face for radio there. Mayor, thank you. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Darabin Parklands and the Friends of Darabin Creek, the two organisations that are volunteer groups that are part of the Darabin Creek Management Committee. So firstly, thank you to all the councillors through you for the recent unanimous support for DCMC. We really appreciate that. I believe DCMC is a beneficial enterprise under section 110 of the Local Government Act and through which the four councils and the other members collaborate in the delivery of shared services to the environment and the community. Darabin Council with the other six collaborators own, govern and control DCMC. And yet its perceived independence causes some problems for your procurement policy. Perhaps you should review your interpretation of your procurement policy before you decide on DCMC arrangements it is due. The agenda paper leads you very strongly towards requiring a competitive tender process. So let's assume that's the option that you recommended in May. In this case, we would advise you proceed very carefully because this will not be straightforward in any way, shape or form. You've had a long-term relationship here and you're trying to unscramble it. In particular, take time to properly consider the issues to ensure a process to meet your obligations under the Act while not putting at risk an important community asset in DCMC. Do not act unilaterally, but in consultation with the other partners, especially Banual. You're running this process in parallel with Banual's own process, why? Maintain transparency with the community throughout whatever process. We have a strong interest and we have for many years and we're able to help if you ask us. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Okay, so we have, sorry, I've lost my spot. Okay, does, does anyone have any questions I'd like to ask of officers? Councillor Dimitri Artis?
Thank you, mayor. Through you, I wanted to ask a question in regards to the report. It states that the reason council is undertaking this process is due to certain aspects of the procurement policy. Now, my understanding is that there are other organisations such as MCMC and potentially DEPC with a similar structure to DCMC. Would these organisations also be captured by Darabin's procurement policy?
Me, me, yeah. It's my show tonight, unfortunately. Thanks, thanks councillor for the question and through you, mayor. So potentially the answer is yes, they're caught. Obviously, council has an opportunity to review the procurement policy, as, as has been suggested by the others, along with the review of the arrangement we have specifically with them. But the short answer is yes.
Are there any other questions? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor, through you. Just a question. Given that we've had an MOU with the Darabin Creek Management Committee for many years, what is the risk of continuing an MOU with the Darabin Creek Management Committee? And, and does that risk matter from a community perspective?
Thanks councillor Greco for your question and through you, mayor. So, so the risks are financial and legal more than anything else. So in answer to the second part of the question, probably not a huge concern for the community, I suspect. But it really is all based about a VAGO report, so Victorian Auditor General's office back in 2023, when councils were under scrutiny for the way they applied funding and grants to organisations. So making sure there were the checks and balances in place. So that's what drove it and drove the changes. The community, quite honestly, probably don't get a lot of visibility of that. But we get looked at every year, as you'd be aware, through our Order and Risk Committee, from the Auditor General and many other oversight bodies.
I just had a subsequent question, if I may, through you, mayor. So you mentioned that there's legal risk. I just want to understand that. Does that mean like a Supreme Court or a High Court or a magistrate's court or tribunal could actually fine and penalise council? So therefore, what is the actual legal risk that the council faces? What is it doing that is deemed to be illegal in the face of the courts?
Thanks councillor Greco and through you again, mayor. So when I say legal risk, it's generally in the form of the MOU itself, councillor, not about a challenge in a High Court or a Supreme Court or any other court, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, so are there any other questions? Other questions? Would someone like to move the motion, councillor Dimitri Artis? Very enthusiastically.
Thank you, mayor. I was trying to get ahead of Gaetano, so he couldn't get in. Yes, I have a motion with some alternate wording to the officer's recommendation.
Okay, so that's up on the board. Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Sangster?
Sorry, mayor, there's just a discrepancy. Point three says July, but point four says August. I think, August down the bottom. I think it was August, given the additional community consultation that we requested for point three.
So August up higher as well, yeah. Okay, so does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Firstly, I wanted to thank the submitters for coming here tonight and expressing their concerns about the current process regarding the future of DCMC. I hear you and I understand how stressful this process has been and continues to be for not only yourselves and your organisations, but also the community at large. I raised this amendment tonight to allow community members to have a say, to have an opportunity to provide feedback on how Darabin Creek and the parklands should be managed in the long-term future. For over 40 years, DCMC has assisted the rehabilitation of the Darabin Creek Corridor and Darabin Parklands and to date continues to provide excellent work in managing the Darabin Parklands and coordinating education and volunteer programmes across the Darabin Creek catchment. The transformation of these areas has been immense. And anyone who lives in the area for over 40 years, which I have and it's kind of showing my age, can honestly say that council and the community are indebted to the efforts of the DCMC staff and the volunteers responsible for bringing this transformation about, which was once a tip, as we know, and now is one of the most beautiful parklands we have here in Darabin. So thank you to you all for doing that. I hope all councillors will be able to support this amendment to the officer's recommendation to ensure we are transparent with the community and that the community members are given an opportunity to provide feedback on how the parklands will be managed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the second a wish to speak? No, I'm gonna reserve your right, or, yep. Okay, is anyone wanting to speak in opposition to that motion? No? Good. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. And look, I have an amendment that I'd like council to consider. Hopefully it'll come up on the screen for councillors to see. It was circulated earlier today, around about lunchtime.
Mayor, if I may, we might just get councillor Greco to just sense-check that one, that it is the most latest, most recent one on the screen. Can you check to see if it's the most recent one?
Oh, okay.
Please? Just tell us when to scroll down.
Scroll up so I can see the rest of it.
Come in.
Yep, that's the one.
Okay, so do the movers of the motion accept this amendment?
Mayor, I was wondering if we could accept four, five and six. Four, five and six. I'm happy to accept four, five and six.
Five and six, seconder? And a moment to read.
Mayor, is it possible to request that the, you know, the gap between one page and the next? So we can see the whole thing? Thank you, on screen. Yeah, just have a question? Is that, can I ask a question?
I think you can because there's been a bit of change, yeah.
Okay. The question is, and councillor Greco, I'm not sure if you know the answer to this, but...
Question to a councillor?
Sorry.
A question to a staff member.
Okay, um, okay, question to staff, who might not know the answer either, but does, has the DCMC been approached about being formally adopted? And do they want to be formally adopted? Because at the moment, they're working in collaboration. So that would take away some of their independence, I imagine.
I can answer that. Thanks councillor Sangster and through you, mayor. So there's been no formal approach to DCMC about other modes of operation, including delegated committees?
Mayor, can I just say?
Yes.
I think because it's just asking for legal advice, I kind of thought it wouldn't hurt to just get some legal advice on these sort of options in addition to everything else. So it's not a decision really.
Okay, so councillor Sangster, happy to accept those ones in yellow?
So, may I just understand what is being proposed by, I put in amendment, whether it's accepted by the mover and the seconder?
Accepted by the mover and I'm waiting to hear if the seconder is willing to accept. Only part, component, councillor Greco. Only the bits marked in yellow. Four, five.
Sorry, mayor, could you speak up a bit because I can't hear very clearly?
So the bits marked in yellow, four, five and six, have been accepted.
Mayor, could I ask a question while councillor Sangster is considering her position?
I've, I've worked out my, but you can ask.
Go on. Yeah, tell me if you can, it would be good.
Um, yeah, sorry. So I am happy actually to accept four and six. But I don't feel comfortable accepting five. I don't think that makes sense for us to do something without asking and talking to them first.
Okay. I'm gonna have to ask for some advice.
So in essence, mayor, that's not supported by the mover and the seconder? So if councillor Greco wanted to continue with this, you would probably treat it as an alternative?
Yeah, I think there's significant change in it. So it would be an alternative rather than an amendment then, which means that it gets to be heard if the original motion doesn't pass. So if we can go back to the original, to councillor Dimitri Artis's motion?
Sorry, mayor, I just understand I'm not following because I can't hear you very clearly. If you could speak into your microphone. I've put in, I've put in an amendment and I understand that the mover and the seconder are not accepting my amendment.
That's correct.
And therefore I'm seeking a, a seconder to my amendment for it then to be considered for inclusion in this substantive motion.
My assessment would be that it's significantly different to the first motion and therefore it becomes an alternate motion rather than an amendment. Yeah, so it gets heard if the first motion doesn't get up. So that's the governance rules on those, am I correct? Yes.
So, mayor, if I may, just understand that councillor Dimitri Artis moved a motion, was seconded. I moved a, an amendment and councillor Dimitri Artis was considering that amendment. So was councillor seconding it. And now I hear that it's not an appropriate amendment, so I must have lost...
It didn't get seconded.
I lost a beat there then.
It didn't get seconded. So...
So I'll be confused.
It didn't get accepted by the seconder, by councillor Sangster. Not in full, no.
Yeah, maybe if I can help councillors. So, so what's occurred is there's been a motion put, moved and seconded, councillor Dimitri Artis and councillor Sangster. Councillor Greco put up an amendment. The mayor has deemed that an alternative rather than an amendment. So it's substantially different to the original. So therefore it only gets debated in the event that the original gets defeated.
And didn't, deemed it an alternative because it didn't get accepted by the...
Okay, I think I understand that. For my benefit and the benefit of people in the gallery, could we understand why it's deemed to be an amendment which goes against, directly opposite to the substantive motion?
It's substantially different. So an amendment just is a small change. So that's substantially different. You've added on a number of points and it also relates back to the original officer recommendation rather than adding to the one that was put up. So in that case, it's quite different to the first one and so it's an alternative motion, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna come back to, yes?
There's just an error in point three. It requests a report to council at the August council meeting, not no later than council meeting, no later than the August meeting. So that was, that's different to what my...
So that was, that's different to what my amendment had. My amendment was circulated.
Yeah, that's okay. I think that's just a typo, they've left the two dates at the August twenty twenty-five. Council meeting outlining options, the two words are mixing around, I think. Yep, okay. Is that all right now?
Ah, yes.
Is that, is that correct now? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so is there anyone wanting to speak in opposition to this motion? Okay, any other speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Look, I'd like to speak in favour of the motion, and I want to commend councillor Dimitri Artis for all the work that she's done in the background, in briefings and discussions with councillors about this particular issue. And I know that it's very dear to her. I think what has to be said at the outset is that what is happening here, and it's a trend in the, in the, in the local government sector, of bringing to market lots of activities that councils are involved in, whether they're community activities or whether they're contracts of a commercial... It's fully understandable that a contract of a commercial nature needs to go through a tendering process. Understandable. Technicalities, commercial confidence, things. But what we notice a tendency of is that community-based, if you like, initiatives or activities that the council is engaged with, with other organisations, are now being filtered through, or tried to be filtered through, the market, the market process. I would say that councils, our councillors in the past, in the distant past, had a lot of wisdom of not including an MOU as a normal tender process and actually deciding courageously at the time, saying, no, this is a community-based project that needs to be run by the, by the council in partnership with the community. That's where it was back then, and I believe that's where it needs to stay. The other point that I've made, and I'm really disappointed that councils did not include my amendments, because all my amendments would have done is to explore avenues, it's not to make decisions about those things yet, but to explore avenues through the legal process, because we've had legal advice that we can't go into, but to explore avenues through the legal process of how we can maintain the, an MOU or some sort of instrument or some sort of process that could keep the work that the Darabin Committee, the Darabin could do outside of a, of a tendering process. That's all my amendments were doing, guys. I'm not sure whether you had time to actually, had a chance to read them or even discuss them with me. I sent them out earlier this morning. People would have had a chance to give me a call, to understand what they were, what they weren't. And it's a pity that councillors didn't do that, but that's all that we're trying to do, is actually to understand whether we've got other legal options to keep this within the community sphere. Thank you.
Well over time, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak to the matter? Shall we move to a vote? Okay, all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. That's carried unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you for coming along. So we're out of number order, but we are going to our Darabin Community Panel Report and Community Vision Adoption. Have you got a question?
No, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, thank you, mayor.
Yeah, okay. First, I just need to ask if there are any questions? No questions, okay. councillor Jolly?
Thank you. Is there a seconder for the officer's recommendation? Sorry, I think I just stepped into your shoes for a moment, mayor, please excuse me.
It's quite all right. So yes, ooh, is there a seconder for that motion? councillor Arturi? Okay, is there anyone wanting? Let me just check where I'm up to. Oh, so any questions? Did we do that? We did the questions, sorry, I'm losing my spot here. Okay, does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'll begin by thanking not only the staff for their work in ensuring that council achieved its broad engagement goals and for supporting the community panel members to participate in the deliberative panel discussions, but also to thank the Warandry Weare Encourage Cultural Heritage Corporation, traditional owners and elders who gave generously of their time, knowledge and collaborative spirit in providing background and support to the community panel members. This report reflects our community and their collective vision for what Darabin should be in 2041. The key themes identified in the original community vision have been updated to illustrate the challenges that we face in terms of climate and environment, health and wellbeing, and economic impacts on social cohesion and livability. This report also gives us a snapshot of our community and its diversity, and we should celebrate the achievements of community members to engage in a deliberative process to agree on a vision for the future. And I encourage everybody who is watching this meeting to read this report in full, and if you're feeling especially nerdy about democracy, to take note of the steps taken to select a truly diverse range of people from our community to participate in the deliberative panel. Deliberative democracy processes aim to remove power relations from decision-making processes and create a platform by which the participants seek mutual understanding. It requires those participants to take on a big responsibility to consider the input from experts and community members, frame it in the local, national and global context, and then to agree on the final decision. As an educator, I highly value this process of learning as a means to arrive at a collective decision. Knowing a bit about not just the general principles of deliberative democracy, but also the rigorous processes that were undertaken here to deliver on those principles gives me great faith that this is the right vision for our community. It is vitally important that we have taken these steps to get the vision right, because from here, our job as councillors is to set the goals and actions that council will deliver on over the next four years and to progress towards making it, towards making that vision a reality. It is up to us now to demonstrate our commitment to this vision as a way to acknowledge and reward the work of our community in setting the, in setting the compass and providing a direction for us to follow in our term on council. And I ask all councillors to join me in voting to accept this report and commit to work together to achieve this future vision.
Thank you. Does the seconder wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, thanks.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? No? councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like councillors to consider. Again, it was sent earlier today, and the officers should have it, and hopefully it'll come up on the screen.
So does the mover, is the mover happy to accept that motion, that amendment?
No, I don't wish to accept the amendment.
Does the seconder? It doesn't matter what the seconder says, okay.
Mayor, do we need to seek a seconder for the amendment in the case that it hasn't been accepted by me?
It depends on the mayor's ruling in the first instance, whether it's an alternative, which is different, significantly different to the original, or an amendment which is, you know, relatively minor changes. Sorry, mayor, I guess it's difficult to assess the impact from, from the words. Point four looks relatively straightforward, that it ensures the council plan, tenure, financial plan and asset plan include a section on how we address, how it meets the community vision, and we should probably be doing that anyway. I'm unsure about the wording of the other, that it may further strengthen and enhance community priorities and focus areas in its ongoing strategic planning work. I don't actually understand what that might mean going forward as far as prioritising, because through the council plan, linked to the vision, linked to the pillars and linked to the strategic priorities of council, that's where the priorities are determined generally?
Look, I think I'm happy to let it go ahead. If, if we have a seconder for that one?
Mayor, could I just, following the CEO's comments there, I'd be happy to accept point four as the amendment, but not point five. To the seconder to see if they would agree?
I'll accept that.
Okay. All right. So that, then that's the motion that stands at the moment then. So take number five off, is that okay with councillor Gaetano?
Beggars can't choose.
Okay. So anyone wish to speak against this motion?
Could I speak in relation to the item now that...
Uh, yeah, okay. Can we just see if anyone wants to speak against? No? So if you want to speak for, including that item?
Look, thank you councillors for accepting at least one of the, one of the items. It's getting better, I suppose. Look, I first want to commend the work that's been done by the community, by the panel, by our staff in actually getting us to this point here. Massive amount of work, started back last year, and it's culminated to give us a sense of direction when we develop our four-year plan, our current budget and also the long-term financial plan. So well done to everyone that's been involved. The only observation that I would make, that if you look at pillar two and the documentation that's there, is that I was hoping that pillar two, and that's why my second point, if I had a chance to speak to it, was that pillar two as it stands now, it needs, I believe, a little bit more meat on the bone in the sense that the, the points that it does talk about...
Are you speaking against the motion now?
Sorry?
Are you speaking against the motion?
No, I'm not speaking against it.
Okay.
I'm complimenting, yeah, just making an observation there. And, yeah, so the, it's not, for my liking, it's not enough, it's not outcome-directed. If you look at pillar three, it's extremely outcome-directed in terms of all the environmental things that we're going to do. Pillar two is just, you know, principle statements without it being strong enough. So I'm hoping that as we continue our work, that we're able to unpack what's in pillar two to make it much more outcome-directed, because it's an important pillar. It's about the cohesion in our community. It's about the diversity in our community, of which we talk so much about. But we need to actually actionise or actually put into, put plans and outcomes and ensure that we get some results in regards to those particular points. Overall, good work, and I look forward to working under the umbrella of this mission statement.
Thank you councillor Greco. Okay, are there any other speakers? I'm going to move to, oh, yes, councillor Arturi?
As a seconder, thanks, mayor. I also want to echo the comments made by councillor Jelly and councillor Greco on this motion, the massive amount of work that's gone into this vision by officers and importantly, members of the community, who we had the privilege of meeting a couple of months ago now, I think. To hear from community members about what's important to them is an extremely important part of the deliberative process, and I'll keep my comments brief, just to say that I look forward to the next steps in developing the council plan.
Okay, thank you. All good? All right, so I'm going to go to the vote. So if you're in support of the motion up on the board at the moment, please raise your hand. And that one is also, I declare that motion carried unanimously, so thank you. All right, the next one, I think, is an easy one. So it's the 2025 meeting schedule?
Was there another item?
Have I missed one?
Has my maths failed me again?
Oh, there is two. Look at that. Not so easy. Options to ensure long-term financial sustainability is next. So, okay, do we have any questions of officers in relation to this report? We do not. If there are no further questions, I was looking for someone to, councillor, I saw them both, but I still did see councillor Jelly first, I'm sorry.
Thank you, mayor, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Okay, is there a seconder for that recommendation? councillor Selkos? Does the mover wish to speak?
Just to make a very brief remark, to thank the officers for their work in bringing us a range of options to note and to consider in our future decision-making. Thank you very much for the time that's been invested in bringing us what I think is a very comprehensive report for us to conduct in the future. There's quite a lot of work for us to work through and consider in future, thanks.
Does the seconder wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right.
Okay, does any other councillor wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Anyone want to speak in favour? councillor Greco?
Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment in relation to decided. Again, it was sent earlier today, early in the morning, in the morning, and hopefully it'll come up on the screen.
Okay, does the original mover of that motion accept the amendment?
No, I think substantively we have passed a motion very similar to this in the December meeting, so I don't believe we need to address that again here.
And the seconder?
Yeah, I'll agree with.
Okay, there's definitely one around aged care services.
Yeah, I'll ask for a seconder to move it as an amendment?
Sure, well, I have to decide again. Look, I think that is a significant change, but as has been noted, is it something that we have already had a motion about in a previous meeting? So I think, yeah, I think we just have to go with the original one. I'm very sorry, councillor Greco, but...
So mayor, just from my understanding, it's, it's, it's really, what's the word? A couple of motions tonight have been said to be not valid because they somehow, you know, contribute. Mayor, I sent those motions in earlier today. No officer, no councillor indicated to me that the, that the motions may, or the amendments may have been, you know, going opposite to the view that's there. So I'm just, I just don't understand what's happening here tonight, that these motions at the last minute are then called invalid. I know that it's your call to do that, mayor, but I would have thought out of courtesy to one of, one of your fellow councillors that I would have been advised of that, so I would have been given the opportunity, if necessary, to change some of the wording on them. So I just want to express my disappointment, yep.
Completely heard, councillor. I think there's also a number of other recommendations that also, amendments that were also going around. So I think it's a very tough thing for recommendations to come out so late and for us to be on top of the variety of things that people are putting forward. So, you know, I could only encourage councillors of future to get them out a little bit earlier so that people get to read and consider. And, yeah, so I think, yeah, I'm sorry, that's my assessment.
It's a point of clarification, mayor. I may apologise for the motion coming in and late in the morning, but I note that many other amendments and motions also came in at the same time or just the night before. So I just want to express again my disappointment in, in, sort of in, I suppose, in being... So I just want to express again my disappointment in, sort of in, I suppose, in being affected in this way.
I'm just gonna get some advice, hang on a moment.
Thanks councillor Greco for your comments and through you, mayor. So I apologise if feedback wasn't provided, but I did review this when it did come in. I must say there was a flurry of amendments and alternatives. The issue from an officer's perspective, and I'm sure this was fed back, and again, I apologise if it wasn't, point two was the issue from a governance perspective. So it spoke about in line with the new vision of sustaining community ownership of services. We can't find anywhere that that is the new vision, so it's not articulated in any of our vision documents. And also that council will not outsource or privatise council services the community depend on. So an assessment of that is a policy, that's a policy decision of council to not outsource. And I don't believe, certainly in my time, there's been no policy direction to not outsource or privatise.
Just a point of clarification, I don't want to be pedantic about this, and I'm sorry, but if you look at pillar one of what we've just endorsed, it actually has that statement, sustaining community ownership of services. That's where I lifted that statement from. I was told earlier today that I could not say that pending whether we approved the new vision. So I'm glad that the new vision was approved so that I could keep that statement in. So I just offer that little correction if I may.
And I apologise, mayor, that is so correct. Thank you councillor Greco. I still think that we have the second point about establishing a policy position of not outsourcing or privatising council service hasn't been resolved in this council.
And I think, to be fair, it's down to really who gets up first in terms of some of these where there's opposing amendments as to who gets heard first. May not be an ideal scenario, but it is the scenario of our governance rules, so, and yeah, so, all right, we're going back to the original motion. So we've had a mover and a second. We've had questions. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this motion? Anyone else who wishes to speak for the motion? Councillor Greco?
Mayor, I'd like to speak in for the motion. Firstly, I think it needs to be noted, the confidential report that comes with this particular item is a really extensive document. And I must say, in the years that I've been on here on this council, I've never seen such an extensive document come to councillors like that. In the past, to be frank and honest, we did not get that sort of information, to the point that we actually denied that information as councillors. Councillor Dimitriadis can attest to that. So I'm really happy that we've all got that information, especially for the new councillors, because it will help us really make informed decisions about the future of the council. What the main issue here is, is about how can we increase our revenue and also how can we diminish our costs? There's a $2 to $3 million gap that we have if we are to maintain our existing services and continue on as we are into the future, that we have to try and find. One observation that I would make, and it's not speaking against the item, is that the extensive report talks about lots of things. That's why in the amendment that I was trying to put, that we need to have a firm principle as councillors, that there will not be outsourcing or privatisation of services that are deemed necessary for the community. That's what I'm trying to get councillors in this room to actually sign up soon. It appears that tonight councillors were not prepared to do that. Out there, in the general public, it leaves a sense of uncertainty as we go through reviewing costs and looking at revenue, where the council is going to go. Are we going to outsource aged care? Are we going to outsource childcare? We need to take a firm stand in relation to that. And that's what my amendment was trying to do. And it's a pity that councillors, we were not able to debate that here tonight.
At a time, thank you. So just to make the point once again, that we have had a previous meeting, given that assurance in relation particularly to aged care. But we will now continue to move on, any other people want to speak? Okay, let's move to the debate, sorry, move to the vote. So can those in favour of the option up on the screen, please raise your hand? So that is councillor Arturi, councillor Boglus, councillor Dimitriadis, councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien. Okay, we've now moved to unanimous, so thank you. So, yeah, declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Now we have the easy one, 2025 meeting central, well, at least I think it's easy, so let's see. So, do we have any questions? Oh, can we, do we need that up on the screen? Do we have any questions of this particular motion? She's coming, thank you. Which is essentially just adding an additional meeting date, which is next Monday. So nothing, do we have a mover of the motion? Thank you councillor Selkos, second, councillor Boglus. Can I jump straight to the vote? Yes, all those in favour, raise your hand. That motion also carried unanimously. Okay, we're on to the Q2, quarter two performance report, which is financial and non-financial. Any questions of councillors? No, I don't know where to look, I saw so many hands. Okay, if there's no further questions, we will, I think that's councillor Dimitriadis. So that's councillor Dimitriadis moving the motion. Is there a second? Councillor Arturi, do you wish to speak? Oh. Yes, sorry, is it the officer recommendation?
No, mayor, it's an amendment.
Okay, can we get that up on the screen, please? Okay.
Mayor, can I ask a question about the amendment at the appropriate time?
Yes, you may ask a question now.
Do we have any indication of how long it would take for a report to be prepared by officers about this item, about this amendment piece?
Yep, Vanessa Petrie, could you answer that?
Thanks for your question councillor Jelly and through you, mayor, regarding the March report. The early work has started around the scoping and the extent that might be involved, so I'd consider that we would be in a position to table that report in March, give advice.
Any other questions? Councillor O'Brien?
Sorry, thank you through you, mayor, just a point of clarification, Vanessa, if I may. So when you say a report is already started and underway, do you mean about the implementation of the plant-based treaty rather than reviewing it in the context that's being offered here?
Thanks for your question councillor O'Brien, know about the food resilience scoping study. Some work would need to occur to provide advice at March, but I consider that that's something that can reasonably occur within the team.
Any further questions? Okay. So I had a mover, did we have a second? Yes, okay. Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So I'm going to be speaking about this item, but in particular the amendment that I'm raising, this is the item that looks at the budget moving forward and any deferrals that we will be making. So the point three that I've added to this particular motion is about the plant-based treaty. So this was, the previous council endorsed the plant-based treaty in April 2024, and this is an international treaty that calls for a transformation by signatories of the treaty to a fully plant-based food system across the world by making multiple demands. Now, the first demand is to transition towards, and I quote, vegan and organic farming, and create green bonds to fund a transition to a plant-based economy. While this is a decision of the previous council, to date, we council have not received any information about the issue. And without proper consideration and community consultation, I believe it was inappropriate to commit our community and the council to sign an international treaty that would make demands on us, not only demands that would impact people's lives, but also require us, and I quote, to fund a transition, to fund it, to a plant-based economy. Given Darabban's current financial situation, we as a council need to consider the plant-based treaty further, which is why I've requested that council receive a report to this matter at the March 2024 council meeting. Now, demand one on the plant-based treaty also includes transitioning to plant-based meal plans in schools, hospitals, nursing homes, prisons and government institutions, universities and businesses. And this decision impacts many people in our community, such as those receiving meals on wheels from council, as well as local Darabban businesses and local organisations. Yet to date, we have not gone out to community consultation. And I personally believe that they should be part of this international treaty that we've already signed. I note that when the previous council presented the plant-based treaty as a notice of motion in August 2023, only one of the 26 meals provided to council was fully plant-based, or in other words vegan. Furthermore, when Darabban endorsed the plant-based treaty in April 2024, half the meals provided to council were meat-based. If we as a council should implement an international treaty, I believe councillors and the council should be leading by example. This was not the case with the former council and who endorsed this treaty. While I understand that food is a significant source of greenhouse gas emissions and contribution and contributes to the climate emergency, I have therefore ensured that this amendment also requests that a report be tabled to council that presents the existing food scoping study as per Action 3.6.2 of the Climate Emergency Plan. So I hope all councillors can support this amendment to ensure we are all fully aware of the implications of Darabban council endorsing the plant-based treaty. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dimitriadis. Does the second wish to speak?
Reserve my right.
Is anyone wanting to speak against councillor Jelly?
I wish to speak against this particular element of the amendment whilst speaking for the totality of the motion. So I note that this report more generally notes that 10 actions are recommended for deferral, and these are important projects that align with and support the community vision, which we have just voted to adopt a few minutes ago. It's important to note where we are in the council planning cycle. As a recently elected council, we find ourselves in a crossover period, as it were, overseeing the final stages of delivery of projects from the previous council as we look to the future and develop new council plan for the next four years. And having just voted to add an additional order E council meeting to our scheduled list of meetings this year to ensure that existing commitments and projects can be delivered by the council, we can see there is significant work still to be done to wind up this crossover period. We will have our chance very soon to make our mark as councillors, and the best thing that we can do as the current stewards of Darabban City Council is to ensure the delivery of projects that have already been adopted. But I'm afraid that going back on previous council decisions, and I note that this amendment was put forward earlier or something and knocked back or something that noted something that represents, or escapes very close to the line in terms of being a rescission motion. You know, this work of undoing previous council decisions disrupts the project delivery that we are trying to oversee at the moment, and it's really stopping us from actually moving forward as a new council. It's not a luxury that we can afford when we have a plate full of projects, sorry, pardon the food pun there, to deliver before the end of June. So I encourage and would ask the mayor that when we come to the vote on this, that we vote on this item separately. Thank you.
Right, councillor Sangster?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to speak against the newly introduced amendment as well. The plant-based treaty lists food systems at the heart of fighting the environmental crisis we are in. Cities that endorse the plant-based treaty are not legally bound by the forty proposals, and it does not mean that they are obliged or able to fulfil the treaty demands. It's a gesture, it's, you know, it's, we're moving forward. However, cities that endorse the plant-based treaty are encouraged to make meaningful changes and implement good practices in plant-based food policies and rewilding within their own jurisdiction and priorities. So there's no legal binding, old age pensioners aren't going to be forced to eat cabbage. Our Climate Emergency Plan highlights this priority, recognising that food production and consumption are key influences in the climate space. Darabban council set a powerful example in recognising the urgency of adopting a global plant-based treaty, and this amendment as written offers no justification to go back on this groundbreaking decision. And it is wasteful and time-consuming for officers to continuously revisit decisions made by the previous council. So I too vote against this amendment.
Any other speakers? Councillor O'Brien? And then councillor Greco? Councillor Greco, you can go first.
Thank you. I guess just to reiterate in terms of what councillor Sangster has outlined on the commitments or the suggestions within the commitment, this is not an unusual thing to have these types of programmes that are offered in this space. I mentioned the UN Sustainable Development Goals earlier, it forms a core part of my daily work. There's so many indicators in that that have very specific asks of different organisations, countries even. But the understanding in that space is that you're not able to meet and commit on everything. You're picking and choosing what's relevant to you in the context of the strategic work that you have ahead of you. So I think understanding how this intersects with our Climate Emergency Plan in particular is really important. We know that food resilience is a massive issue in the community, and we know it's a very wasteful part of our community in terms of the amount of food that Australians waste each year. So getting better systems in place to address this, to provide a pathway forward for our community and to us as an organisation, I think is a really great thing that we committed to, and I'm really disappointed to see it being challenged like this. Again, also in the context of us having had no formal briefing on it and no formal discussion about it being taken off the table. So I just want to say, just consider what it can mean for us, consider what it does mean that we have this position of leadership, and I ask people not to walk this back. Thank you.
Councillor Greco, did you want to talk?
Councillor, I have an amendment that I'd like council to consider, if it could come up on the screen. It's point three, and then there's a change in the orders for five, six and seven.
Okay, so this is not in addition to the last one, this is instead of?
So, mayor, could you speak up?
This not in addition to the last motion, this is instead of?
It's an amendment, mayor.
So amendment to the original motion?
That's right.
Okay. All right, so. So your motion is to remove councillor Dimitriadis's additional. That's the motion we have before us.
It will be to keep, it's an amendment to the motion that was previously on the screen. That's what I'm doing.
To add that points to the previous one. Okay. Okay, can we get that up? Thank you. I'm just, in relation to your point councillor O'Brien, that, my reading of that wording doesn't say that it's being taken off, it says there's a report coming in relation to the plant-based treaty. That's what the wording says, but. Okay, so this is councillor Dimitriadis's motion now. Do you accept the change?
Yes, mayor.
And second? Okay, so this is now the. Okay, so this is now the motion that we're looking at. So, does anyone want to speak against?
May I get an opportunity to speak to it?
Yes, you can speak to it.
So if I've heard correctly, the mover and the second have accepted the motion, is that correct? I thank the mover and the second. I feel like I'm here and now tonight, I'm present. Thank you. First of all, I think we have to make some comments about what the original report was all about. There's a massive amount of work that is in that report, and I think we have to thank our officers, because what this report is about, the performance of the councils, about the second quarter performance up to December. And so as you can see, the report goes on and on, and it talks about the things that we're achieving, the things that we have got a slight delay, and the things that we actually are sending off to be done at a later time because of the massive amount of work that's involved. So I thank the officers for bringing this report and for their mighty effort in keeping the council moving. Having said that, just to quickly go to my point four in the motion, is that in 2023, 24, there was a council-funded scoping study, that was about two budgets ago, and that scoping study, the next piece of work as part of that, after that scoping study, was to be to do a concept design plan. Last year in June, during the budget, councillor Dimitriatis was a great supporter of this, was to put $80,000 to actually commence the work of doing a concept design plan. Unfortunately, the previous council rejected that and removed that from the budget, and as a result, we didn't go ahead with that work. Why it was important, councillors, is that the public documents that we currently have, the long-term financial plan, say that it'll be 2035 before we actually could do any work on this.
Please wind it up, councillor.
So I'm hoping that the councils will endorse this item. Run out of time.
Councillor Sangster, you wanted to speak?
Thank you. I'm wondering if it's possible if we can vote on councillor Dimitriatis's newly introduced amendment separately. I'm happy to vote on them all separately if that makes it fairer. I am happy to support the latest amendment, but I'm not happy to support the first amendment. So I'd prefer it if we could vote on them separately.
We're not up to the vote yet, so I might just wait till we get some other speakers yet.
Thanks, mayor. Everyone's eager to get to the vote, but again, can I echo what councillors have said in relation to all the work that has gone into what is a very detailed and long report, and commend officers for the information and advice that they've provided in that report. And I just want to highlight clause E in relation to Clements Reserve, which is on the border of my ward and councillor Selkos's ward. I'll follow that with great eagerness and look forward to that progressing in the new council plan as mentioned there. I think I just want to mention very briefly the alternate, the part of the alternate motion at three, that just so we don't mischaracterise it, is asking for a report, and hopefully the advice that is provided in that report will be useful for us making decisions going forward, rather than characterising it as a blatant walking back of the policies that are detailed in that clause. And of course, at clause four, it is something that is close to all of our hearts, and I hope that councillors can support the motion in full.
Okay, does anyone else have anything they want to add to the debate? Okay, we will move to the vote. I'm happy, I'm actually going to bring three and four out separately, so we're going to have three votes. So the original motion, then three, then four. Okay, so for the original motion, you know what I mean, but the motion prior to the amendment, the officer one, those in favour, please raise your hand.
Mayor, I think officers are highlighting it, so maybe can we wait? I don't know if it's going to continue to highlight, or is it, are we stopping just before three?
But it's just all of it with three and four taken out. Yeah, if you go down, there's more at the bottom.
Five, six, seven and eight.
Uh, no, five, six, seven, eight. Yep. That's right. So everything other than three and four, basically. So can you raise your hand if you are in favour of that part of the motion? Okay, that's carried unanimously. If we can now look at point three, which relates to the plant-based treaty. So those all in favour, please raise your hand. So councillor Aturi, councillor Boglis, councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Selkos and councillor Olares, those against, is councillor Jelly, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, and I'm presuming an abstain, an abstain from councillor Greco. Sorry, I'm losing my ability to speak. Okay, and then the final one, which is approve $80,000 for a concept design to the reserve or what? Yep, so number four, all those in favour, please raise your hand. So that's councillor Aturi, councillor Boglis, councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Greco, councillor Sangster, councillor Selkos and councillor Olares, all those against, no one, and then abstaining, presuming we have councillor Jelly and councillor O'Brien. Thank you, all right. The next item is a CEO Employment Matters Committee charter and CEO employment remuneration policy. Councillors, do you have any questions of officers regarding this item? Get the motion up on the screen. No questions? Motion coming? There it is. Thank you. Okay, do we have a mover of the motion, councillor Greco? Do we have?
Thank you, mayor. I have an alternate motion that I'd like to move.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Can I just ask when this was circulated? Sorry councillor, I might have missed it in the flurry of.
Speak up.
I might have missed it in the flurry, but when was this circulated? Sorry, I might have missed it. Just so I can have it on my screen as well.
I think it was about midday.
Oh, I didn't understand that, if you can.
Councillor Aturi was just asking when it was circulated, he's trying to find it on his computer.
It was circulated again, late this morning.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion? So that motion is lapsed. Is there any other movers? Councillor Jelly?
Mayor, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Okay, so back to this one. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Aturi, would the mover like to speak?
No, I reserve my right, thank you.
Second, no? Does anyone want to speak against the motion? Okay, anyone want to speak in favour of the motion? Ah, the mover apparently needs to speak.
Thank you, mayor, for inviting me to speak to this motion. Look, I think we have undergone a fairly rigorous process, and I note that this item has been, has returned to the chamber, we considered it last month, and there were a few, I think, questions. We wanted to ensure that we weren't rushing the process. So I commend the motion to you. I think we have made a good start in terms of updating the charter and the policy for CEO Employment Matters. And I think this represents a really good opportunity for us to demonstrate good governance in proceeding this forwards. And I note that the amendment that councillor Greco circulated earlier, with respect, I understand what it was you're trying to do in terms of radical transparency, but I feel that the officer advice that was circulated in relation to that indicated that wasn't, I think, the best way to go forwards with that. So perhaps there's other ways that we can explore other options for doing that in future. So I encourage you to bring that as a discussion to the CEO Employment Matters Committee in future. Okay, so thank you very much, mayor, and I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you. If there's no other speakers, shall we, you'd like to speak?
Mayor, I have an amendment that I'd like to put, and the amendment is essentially the motion that I had, but with a few qualifying words, which makes it substantially different. And the qualifying words before the word "the full contract" is "with the consent of the CEO, the full contract, blah, 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 blah." So if I could have a second for that motion?
Mayor, sorry, mayor.
Would anyone like to second that motion? Sorry? It hasn't been circulated, but we can, can we write that on the screen so people can have a look at it?
Sorry, mayor, can we ask a question in relation to the amendment?
Yes, you can. Yeah, can you just, is it confirmed that what's written on the screen is what you wanted? Okay, and so we've got a mover, it's not clear, okay? Is that what you're meaning, Gaitana, so it's councillor Greco? So with the agreement of the CEO, is that okay? We're having a lot of wordsmithing here, but I think it's Gaitana, Greco's motion, so councillor Greco, can you tell us what you want?
Could I ask a question of the amendment?
Can we just wait till, can we just get this? Is that the wording now, councillor Greco? Are you happy with that?
Yes, I'm just wondering if the, when would the CEO be made aware of this as, like, would this be part of their interview, and what would happen if they, we chose the CEO, but they said, no, I'm not happy with that? Would we therefore have to go with a different CEO or? Yes, I see that it's with the consent. I'm just wondering, bless you, what it would mean if the CEO chose not to?
Okay, maybe our CEO can answer that question.
So obviously I can't speak for councillors, but this being part of the motion for the CEO Employment Matters Committee, I would imagine that this would have to be raised through the CEO Matters Committee, through the recruitment process, and the chair being made aware of it, along with obviously all of the members, which is all of you. So through the process of the recruitment, you would want to make that public at that time, or make it known at that time to any candidate.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Oh, any other questions first? Do we have a second for that motion?
For the amendment.
So councillor Sangster is seconding. Do you like to speak to the motion?
Certainly will, thank you for seconding the motion, because it's been the opportunity to explain it. First of all, in terms of the general motion, again, a lot of this work was done by the CEO Employment Matters Committee that's come into council for our ratification. Just specifically in relation to the point that I've raised, I want to thank our monitors for sending us a document that looks at the best practices guidelines for remuneration policy. And if we look at page 11 of that document, and I think I sent an email suggesting that to council, it says that under best practice guidelines and remuneration policy, it says there that the local government law practitioners, that's all the lawyers that are associated with local government, and we get a lot of law advice, they are suggesting that the full CEO contract, or at least the key contract terms, should be on the council website. When I saw that, because I went back to that document, and again, I thank the monitors for giving us that document, I went back to that document and thinking, okay, if that's best practice, and our CEO and Product Matters Committee has said that we are a committee of best practice, well, then I think that that should be included into the requirements that we place on the CEO, obviously now, and with their consent. I think it's important because it creates trust between the organisation and the community, given the level of interest that the community has in regards to CEO remuneration. Obviously, what will go online will not be, you know, personal information. We don't want to know where Michael actually lives, or what he has for breakfast and things like that. It'll be the essential information that will go onto that. A lot of information is already public because it forms part of the CEO Employment Matters Committee Charter, but this makes us really transparent and open with the community, and also it creates a better life for our future CEO, once they're engaged, that they know that they have been fully transparent with the community, and like that, a future CEO will actually gain the full trust of the community, given the critical role that they have. So I'm hoping that councillors will endorse this unanimously so that we can move forward on it. Thank you. I know I've taken up time.
Yeah, thank you.
But it's just a great opportunity to say things because I've been cut short in other moments.
Does the second wish to speak?
I would, yep, no, I don't, sorry.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak in, does anyone want to speak in opposition to the motion? Anyone want to speak in favour of it? Okay, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. So that's councillor, no, councillor Aturi, councillor Boglis, councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Greco, councillor O'Brien, councillor Sangster, and councillor Selkos and myself, councillor Olares, all those against, councillor Jelly, and so that motion is carried. Okay, thank you. The next item has been deferred, that's the container deposit scheme.
Sorry, mayor, point of order, I think this now becomes a substantive motion, and then we still need to go to the, so we need to see if there's any further speakers.
Okay, so we have voted that this now is a substantive motion, correct. I am assuming we have already debated and there is no need for further debate, so I'm going to put it straight to the vote. So if you would, if you are in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. And that one's carried unanimously, so thank you very much. Okay, container deposit scheme has been deferred to a future meeting because there has been some new information, so that report will be updated. So we're moving to the governance report from February 2025. Councillors, do you have any questions relating to this item? Would anyone like to move the motion? Councillor Jelly?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to move a slightly amended officer's recommendation, just. Just simply seeks to change a few things, unfortunately, including the spelling of my name in one of the reports. I'm so sorry, everybody, but I just have one of those names. It was originally French, Gele, and there's more Es than autocorrect likes to believe. And so here we are. But there's a couple of other points, so I'll let councillors have a look.
Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Sangster? Does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, I believe I should speak to this one. Thank you very much. In moving this motion, I note that the governance report now reflects, I think, a true and accurate record of the summaries of committee meetings and various activities that council and council laws have undertaken in the past month. And now that we've got, so just to explain to everybody at home who might be confused about why we need to have an amendment around this, because at our December meeting, we appointed new councillors to all of our committees. Some of the committee advisory committee annual reports that came in in December, some of them noted who those new council appointments were and some of them did not. So this motion basically seeks to just go back and correct that so that we've got a true and accurate record as of the end of December. I think it's just a funny kind of timing issue around a new council coming in and when those annual reports. So I extend my apologies to those on, those minute takers and secretariats of those committees who need to actually go back and just make those minor amendments, but hopefully it's not too onerous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, does the second wish to speak?
I reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other speakers? Okay, so we might move straight to the vote, yeah? Okay, all those in favour, raise your hand. And that motion is carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, so the next item of business is the Diverse Complex Support Programme. This is a report in response to the notice of motion. Councillors, do we have any questions? Councillor Jelly?
Hi, me again, thank you. I just wanted a quick question about whether this funding represents a greater return on investment for the services provided by the complex case worker than council would be able to achieve if council were to absorb the work.
Does one of the officers wish to?
If I may, thank you through you, Mayor. The funding for this particular function of diverse is a continuation of a programme that they've been running, which is very highly regarded across the community and they're up and running. The funding has become available through some complications and slight pauses to existing programmes. It's fair to say that if the money were not provided, then it could go to the existing programmes being able to do some of their work that got paused. Nevertheless, the assessment of the team continues to advise that the programme that diverse is running has impacted on a high number of people. They're up and running and it's, it deals with a complicated timing issue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will move to debate then, do we have a mover? Councillor Greco?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation from the officers as it is.
Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Boglis? Does the mover wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, and first of all, thank you for bringing this item back to the council because it's such a worthy project. Just as, in terms of the project, our officer explained a little bit about it, but the report's quite, very evident, is that to extend the short-term funding of this project, the project expires on the 28th of February and they need money to carry them over at least to the 30th of June. And then we'll see what happens after that, whether they get support from other sources of funding or whether council will be prepared to support it again. It's an important project because it deals with complex cases. And it's, so far it's supported over fifteen hundred people in our community with complex issues. And, and, and it needs another thirty five thousand dollars in order to keep the project going. The report also says that, again, thanks to our, our, our community services team and development team, that the funding can be accommodated within their existing budget, which is a good sign. So if we don't have to try and find money for it, it actually can be accommodated. And that, like that the complex care worker and a specialised social worker can continue their work in relation to intervention in these cases. The other point that I would make, and I think it's valid to make, councillors, is that diverse came to us last year, about this time last year. They came to us asking for money, exactly for what's here. They came asking for money at the time because they're unsure. They asked for fifty thousand dollars. The previous council rejected that as part of the deliberations on the budget and instead put the money towards e-scooters and all sorts of other projects and not such an important project like this. And I'm glad that it has come back because myself, with councillor Demetriadis, I moved the motion to try and get fifty thousand dollars last year to be put in the budget to fund this project. And I'm hoping that we would unanimously support this, the work that diverse, that diverse does because it is a key and important project. The other thing that I would say is that by diverse doing this, they will have some stability in their organisation in order to extend the work to the community. And again, I'll just make this final point. Why is this important? If we read the new vision statement, the work that's done by the community panel, the key issue that they identified was cost of living issues. Cost of living issues impact our community profoundly and particularly impact the most vulnerable in our community, of which the fifteen hundred people that have been supported are part of that cohort. So it's critical that we put this money towards diverse so they can just continue to help the people in our community that most need it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Did the second wish to speak?
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. Look, I, as a newly appointed councillor to the West Ward and Darabhan councillor, having worked in mental health for twenty years, I'm very proud to stand here tonight and to support this programme. I think what we know about our municipality and our people's needs and what the data has shown in former years is that the mental health and wellbeing of our community is in need. And from loneliness to sedentary lifestyles, there is, there's a lot to be done in this space. And I applaud councillor Greco for speaking forward. There is a lot of work to do in this space and I think this is one of many amazing programmes we can link into, inclusive our neighbourhood houses, our NGOs and the greater municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Boglis. Are there any other speakers? Okay, we might move to the vote then. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. That motion is carried unanimously, thank you all. We've done that one? The next report is about a contract to Maryborough Avenue Kindergarten Expansion. Councillors, does anyone have any questions regarding this report? No, okay. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Aturi? Do we have a second, councillor Greco?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, Mayor.
Yep.
When that populates.
Yep, okay, fantastic, thank you.
That was nice and efficient, thank you.
Does the mover wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great pleasure to speak on this motion to award the contract for Maryborough Avenue Kindergarten redevelopment in Kingsbury, in the heart of my ward in the North East. I want to thank council for, of course, its contribution of 1.3 million and thank the state Labour Government for its contribution of 1.7 million to this great project that will see an increase of spots at a time, an increase of thirty eight spots at a time for children in the local community up to a total of sixty six. The project will see an upgrade of outdoor spaces, adding a kinder room and expanding another. It's a fantastic project that I look forward to tracking with great eagerness. And I, of course, look forward to seeing this motion supported unanimously and commend the motion to the chamber.
Does the second wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you to the councillor that moved this item. I think a lot of the main points have been covered in terms of, you know, what this does, in terms of the tender process. But I think what's important to point out is that, you know, why does council invest in kinders, in the kindergarten sector, together with the state government and funding, which is important? Why councils invest in kindergartens is that because it provides a service which there is a large gap in the, of that service in the northern suburbs, particularly north of Bell Street, but particularly because it provides an equitable process or opportunity for families, particularly families from disadvantaged backgrounds or from vulnerable backgrounds, to get access to quality early childhood education that they perhaps would not get through the private sector. So the council at the moment, from what I understand, is that across the whole city, we have about forty percent, we support about forty percent of the kindergartens. I could be wrong with that figure, but it sits around about that figure. The population is increasing, there's going to be more demand, particularly in the northern end of the city, for early childhood education. The question is for council, do we maintain our presence, our place in early childhood education or do we diminish our place in early childhood education? This, awarding this contract, make sure that we as a council stay in the game, stay in the place as the population increases so that we can maintain that ratio of community-supported childcare centres versus the private sector. And finally, what I would say is that, and why that's particularly important, because I've been told by many people that work in the early childhood education sector that the council-supported services far outstrip in terms of quality service to the, to the private sector.
Thank you, councillor Greco.
And that's why we need to be in the game and put money where our mouth is.
Thank you. Okay, do any councillors wish to speak in opposition? Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Okay, I'm going to put it to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And the motion is carried unanimously, thank you. Look, we are so close to finishing, but I just think, we're probably just to be safe, can I please get a procedural motion to extend the meeting for up to thirty minutes? Councillor Jelly, seconded by councillor Boglis. All those in favour? Thank you, okay. So item ten is items to be tabled. There are no items to be tabled tonight. No notices of motion tonight. Are there any, is there any urgent business to consider? No? Okay, so we'll go to item thirteen. Okay, council, there is one confidential report to be considered this evening. It's the closed landfill aftercare. This item is designated confidential because it's legally privileged information, being information to which legal profession privilege or client legal privilege applies, pursuant to section three, one E of the Act. So in accordance with section sixty six two of the Local Government Act of 2020, council may resolve to close the meeting to the members of the public to consider the item designated confidential in accordance with section three, one A of the Act. So essentially, we are, I'm looking for a councillor to move the recommendation to close the meeting for the public and move into the confidential meeting. Councillor Aturi, seconded by councillor Greco. Put it to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined this evening in the room and those who have tuned in via the live stream. Please note, the live stream will not return after the confidential meeting has concluded. So I will now declare the meeting closed to members of the public at eight fifty-three PM and request officers to cease the live streaming and recording.